For the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington. Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
And Councilman Shaw.
All right, give them to approval of the agenda.
Some of.
Step four, move to properly support any discussion. Here none in favor, sixty-five, I say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have a motion carried into new business of screen.
Okay, so we're here today to, um, prove or ask for approval for the deficit elimination plan. You're currently in one already. Because you went into a deficit in two thousand twenty, so you entered the deficit elimination plan. That plan requires you to attempt to get out of the deficit. So if you look on the screen, you'll see the deficit elimination plan that you already agreed to. This is the resolution that has already been signed by the council. Showing that at the beginning of the period, you were in a deficit of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That's what prompted this deficit elimination plan. Your plan indicated that you would make, or that the city would make about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars above and beyond its expenditures, but still have a three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit at the end of twenty-one. That's what's on the screen.
Okay, explain that all over again.
Okay, so, we went into a deficit as a city in two thousand twenty, so therefore, you were required to get a plan that would state how you're planning to get out of the deficit. So you guys, before I got here, you agreed and signed a resolution that you had a plan, and this was the plan. So for this, for twenty-one, this shows you the numbers you started with and the numbers you ended with in twenty-one. This is the plan that you signed already, okay? Again, this plan indicated that you would make three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that's over here. That's this number. You started the year in a deficit of six hundred and ninety-seven, basically seven hundred thousand dollars there was a deficit. That's what you started the year with. Your plan of making this.
This is totally different.
So to break with this, I'm going one step at a time. This is the one that you already, I have several different slides that I'm gonna put up here.
Okay. So this is not what we're looking at, this is the one that we're gonna approve?
This is the one that, this is the one you're in now.
Okay.
This is the one you already signed, I'm just giving you the background, the history, so we can get to while we're here.
Was that ever sent to us here? Cause I can't see anything even with my glasses.
Yeah, so this is the one that you've already entered into, so you all should have a copy of this because you signed it.
Are you talking about we should have a copy from recent submissions to us, or from last year when we signed it?
Yes, whenever you signed it, you should have a copy of this. You already agreed to this. Current deficit elimination plan, I'm just showing you the one that you already signed.
So the one we already signed was not sent to us again, we gotta go through our, all the emails we received to find it now, right?
Or you can look right here.
I told you, I can't look right there, I'm trying real hard.
So, so let's, let's get that printed off. So any of the slides that you're presenting, I mean.
I'll email them, I'll email them to you, okay?
Yeah, but as it relates to right now, though, us doing business, we should be able to look at it. I see it there, but we should be able to look at it here. So, let's, uh, print that off, let's send that, send that to, click right now and get that, get that printed off. Any slides that you can show us right now. Let's get that printed off. Actually, we'll see if, Melanie, if you could. You get the. Yeah, help her quickly. Send that to.
Thank you.
Send a copy of the, the, the letter and all that good stuff, everything is there.
I'm in twenty-one. Yeah, cause I know we got a, um, we got a.
That's the whole presentation?
Entire deficit elimination plan.
Yeah.
Explanation.
And then let's, uh, get some copies, six, six you're gonna need.
It would have been around the time that we had helped me prove that it, um, the budget.
When was that letter, go back to that letter.
That is.
Put that letter on the screen.
Twenty-one.
Put that letter on the screen.
Uh, right there, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, go, load down, go, you know, go through it.
And I'll show you the resolution we decided, uh, there's the resolution here.
Does that show who voted for it and who didn't, no?
Yeah, it does.
You got six yeas and zero nays.
Okay.
Decided by Felicia on May third, twenty twenty-one, okay? Go back up, scroll back up, so we're all on it.
You want us to go back to the numbers?
Yeah, just go back to the top of it.
Oh, to the top of it?
Go back to the top of the screen, and then just easily slide down through it.
Okay.
This will be before us. On August sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Evaluated your deficit plan for the correction of the deficit conditions for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty. Okay? Continue, on down. Okay, stop there. All right, seeing that this is the act that we should be under, should correct the deficit conditions above mentioned in the fund, in order for the department to provide assistance to the city in the effort to better monitor the city financial conditions. Let's, the city submit the following, so this is all the things that we have to submit. Budget to actual report, cash flow worksheet, and accounts payable. What was that sent to us?
Excuse me, this is the state.
Yep, that, that, you received it in an email? Or you had it?
He just showing me what we were already in.
Yeah.
He just sent it to me, saying, hey, you guys are already in the deficit elimination plan.
That's, uh, Eric or Larry, okay? All right. Going down.
I take.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Being a deficit elimination plan from twenty twenty-one, um, so it just carry over to this one? Because we're still not out of the woods, so that's why we gotta create a new one.
Yes, ma'am, every, every year is basically just because we're not out of the deficit. Each year, the council has to approve it, saying that, okay, you guys are on track, you guys didn't do what you were supposed to do. You know, this is, it's, so it's basically us governing ourselves, and then the state is saying, okay, you're doing a good job, or you're not doing a good job.
Yeah, cause I was, I'm trying to find something that Vijay sent out to us, do you remember? I'm not sure.
What was?
He sent out the questions that the state had given him.
Okay.
And like, what is your plan, and blah, blah, and then he would, he answered them, that's what I'm asking for, what, for this year.
Yeah, so, so, so basically, that was like the start of it? For us to actually go into a deficit elimination plan, and then get it approved by council? So, all of the questions that were asked then are those questions that should be existing on this document.
Correct, that's what I'm asking.
Now we should, so that document, basically Vijay had to create that, we didn't have to do that.
Right, okay, so this year deficit elimination plan, I mean, even though you're giving us the numbers, but what has changed?
Yep.
As far as, that's what I'm asking for.
Oh yeah, I totally understand that, I'm, I'm with you one hundred percent.
Right, because this, giving me figures is not telling me anything.
Got you, yeah, so, basically what you asked for the administration was give you, basically, okay, well, what's gonna be shaved from?
Correct, to get to this figure that we're getting to, that's all I'm asking.
Is that something that you're being to provide to us?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna get to that.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I'm just trying to go strategically to first understand where we are.
Okay.
Understand where we're going and why we're here.
Got you, but at the same time, and, 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 and all due respect to what you got going, as it relates to us being a councilmatic body, we still should have that information before us.
Right.
So, for, for all of it, so like you said, like, you got it over this, you got it up here for us, that's great? But at the same time, having it right here in our hands, that way we can see it, and we can follow along.
Thank you.
And, and understand it from this, I mean, that's just, that's a good thing to do, okay? So, so, at the same time too, I know to me you had talked about that, um, before we had, when you had presented this to me, as it relates to just a breakdown, and making sure that, you know, the numbers are lined up with each fund, or whatever it is, saying that this is where we're taking the money from, or this is how we're gonna make money, whatever it is that you're projecting. So we're all on the same page, right? Cause we know that this is crucial.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Only the change, this is, that's why, the reason I was getting into the history, is because to understand what did change.
Got you, okay.
Very little changed.
Okay, all right, got you.
So you're already.
Hold, hold on, let me just make sure, so Mayor Protim, back to your original question, and, and that's a great question, as it relates to just, for us with general information. We went into the deficit elimination plan at the end of twenty twenty, right? So it was basically from nineteen, so nineteen into twenty, and then we got to the budget, and we said, oh, you got a deficit. What's your plan is to get out of it. Those questions were sent to us by the state, saying to answer these questions, set it up, get it approved by the council, and we're gonna monitor it for five years. Basically, that's what you're saying, you're gonna get out of it within.
Right, right, right.
So, this is just, as we're going through, this is just, okay, where are you at, it's like a report card.
Okay.
Where are you at, what you've done, if you haven't done anything, you know?
Right.
We, we, you know, we looking at you, what we need to do, we need to see you some assistance, or whatever, you know, the state decides to do.
Right.
But, we're, as a body, we need to be able to look at the numbers and see what has changed, what, you know?
Right, okay.
And that's basically what Mr. Green is saying to us right now.
Right.
So, we don't have to answer those questions anymore, we already did that already.
Okay.
They, what they'll come back and say, if they don't accept the plan, is, okay, now the questions are, why you didn't use?
Right, and we need to be able to answer that with the documentation that we have.
Exactly, but it won't happen till after we submit it to them, because basically what's happening right now is that we're just approving it to be sent to them.
Okay.
For them, for us to say that, yeah, we agree, you know, or, no, we don't agree, and then they gonna send it, and they gonna look at it and say, okay, all right, here are the questions, then it's for us.
So I just go through the presentation, if it's something that I think I should need before I pass this, then that's why I ask for it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right, Mr. Green.
All right, so, we were in the deficit, to start, showing that we were possibly gonna make some money, and still be in a deficit though, at the end of the period, as you can see.
And that's that three hundred and sixty thousand that you're talking about?
Yes. Well, what did happen is this, this is the audit, which I did send all of you guys a copy of the audit.
Which we will be having the audit presentation in the first meeting in September.
Okay.
That's something that we definitely wanna make sure that everybody, we put it out to the community, so, cause I know that this body's been asking for that, as it relates to the audit, and is actually doing the presentation, it should be done. So, you know, between, uh, Brian and Mr. Green, the auditors, they'll be done, okay? Well, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Yep, so what happened was, we ended up making twenty-nine thousand instead of the three hundred and sixty thousand, and the deficit actually ended up being five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, and not three hundred thousand. This is after the audit came in. Remember, when you made, when you entered into the original deficit elimination plan, you hadn't went through twenty-one yet.
Right.
This is just your projections. The audit comes in and say, okay, well, you didn't make three sixty, you only made twenty-nine, instead of having a three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit, you got a five hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar deficit. So the deficit went up like, over two hundred thousand dollars. Okay? With that being said, you can't possibly stick with the same plan and get rid of the five ninety-seven, cause the original plan had to only get rid of three hundred and thirty-something.
Correct.
So since the audit came out, and the deficit is more than the three thirty, okay, well, update the plan.
What, I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm, did the check, were there any specifics that showed why it went up two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's in the audit, I mean, you know, just overall.
Oh, okay, so we wait for the audit, okay.
No, you had, I didn't, you got the audit.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, but we'll do the presentation, and one of the, the questions, and Councilwoman Wiley is ac, is asking, when we've put the audit out, is what happened.
Yep.
And we know that, of course, COVID, and, you know, some of those things where the numbers were trending down. We know too, uh, Councilwoman Wiley, because of, uh, what, what's happened is in relation to the state overall, and, uh, the, the, the court not being able to bring in so much revenue because of different things that have been eliminated, like for instance, marijuana, those charges, and those things, as it relates to, you know, there's definitely ticketing systems. Of course, like even this year, as we talked about earlier in the budget, um, that one of the things that had been, been changed is, as it relates to the, the powers for the judicial system to be able to charge people for suspended licenses. So, that type of stuff is gonna show out in the audit, while we can collect enough revenue.
Would, would it be that extensive, that, that amount of money?
It's the audit, yeah.
No, no, I'm talking about just what you were.
It's just one thing, that's why I'll just give you one example.
Oh, okay.
That's not everything, you know, there's a number of other things that could have happened too, so, go ahead, Mr. Green.
Okay, so, we see the first problem, or the first reason we have to update is because the deficit has gotten bigger. So if the state sees that, say, well, the deficit isn't going down, the deficit got bigger than what it was supposed to be. Not bigger than what it started, but bigger than what it was supposed to be at the end of twenty-one. That's the first thing. The second thing is, even if it had came in at the three thirty, you still would be doing this. Any year you end in a deficit, whether you're in a current plan or not, you have to update the DEP. So every year that we fall in a deficit, at the end of the year, you gotta do this. That's the second thing, so it's like, I mean, you're gonna have to do it anyway according to your original DEP, you were gonna be doing this.
Now, you know, the, the thing that I had, my question, and just wanna get this out to everybody and to the general public, as it relates to the DEP, we couldn't even start to even talk about eliminating the deficit until we actually came out of the audit, is that correct?
Well, you had already put a plan together before this audit, cause we just got the audit, so you already entered a plan.
Okay.
But, you know, those final numbers for twenty-one wasn't out because the audit wasn't complete.
Okay.
So what your projections were, was that you would have a three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar deficit at the end of twenty-one, but you ended up having a five ninety-seven.
Based on the years audit before, and I mean, based on the years' projection with the DEP.
Based on the projection with the DEP, yep.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, so first, your deficit increased, secondly, even if it didn't increase, you still have to update it because you're still in the deficit. Until you get those parentheses from around the numbers, you're still in the deficit. So you have to update and say, okay, this is where we are, this is what we're gonna do, right? The third thing is, in your plans for going forward for twenty-two, twenty-three, no, not twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, right, the year that we just finished, your original DEP had us receiving the entire two point four million from ARPA. We didn't.
But didn't we know that from the beginning, they said from the beginning that we would only be getting half this year and half the next year? So why count it if we knew we weren't gonna get it?
See, this is what they said, uh, Councilwoman Wiley, they said half this year, this year, but you know what the next year was? It was supposed to be like April, May, or something, that was the next year, so it wasn't.
It was like what?
April or May, so when Brian was speak, when they were speaking about us getting the money in the next year, they were still talking about this fiscal year, but just the next annual year. But that wasn't the case.
Okay, so, hold, hold up, hold up.
Go ahead.
Cause we never use year per se, we always doing fiscal years, isn't that what we deal with?
Yes, we do.
So how did we confuse ourselves?
And you know what, I did some research, I looked up some information, and, and spoke to some people, and talked to the state, and they said, Darryl, uh, you're, you're correct, you may very well might get that money in the next fiscal year, and that's when I brought it to the mayor's attention, and brought it to Brian's attention.
Well, okay, maybe I'm not hearing good.
Didn't get it.
Because you just said the same thing I said, we were supposed to get it next year, not, never, there was never any reason for us to include two point whatever, when we were only getting one point whatever.
No, what happened is this, this was the language. The language is, when you get your first payment, about twelve months from there, you'll get the second one, that was the language. We got our first payment around, what, in October or something like that? So that told me, we're not gonna get this until the next fiscal year. So I immediately called Brian, I said, Brian, I don't think we're gonna get this money in this fiscal year, because according to what I'm reading, it's gonna be the next fiscal year. I called the state, verified the heat check, he said, Darryl, you're right.
Yep.
So that's how that happened.
Yeah, cause even when Brian was doing, remember when we were sitting here all together, and Brian was doing a presentation, talking about how we can spend the ARP, and we were gonna put all the ARP into that fiscal year? So that was that two point four, because they were projecting that we would receive it all in one year, which that didn't happen.
So because that didn't happen, now you gotta adjust your DEP again, because you didn't get two point five, you only got one point two. So we put that one point two in the next year. So that's the other change.
We knew that, we knew we weren't gonna get the whole, full amount. So it's like two or three conversations, remember at first when Brian, when it came in, we were asking if we could even use the money to balance off the budget, and they were like, well, they didn't know necessarily. We were actually on Zoom, these were all Zoom meetings, if you guys are involved. And they were saying that, we, we don't know if we're gonna even be able to spend the money on helping us balance off our budget, with, because it was basically law enforcement. And we said, oh, okay, well, let us know how we're gonna be able to spend the money. Well, then they came back again, and was like, well, the, the laws that we came out, but we thinking that we gonna be able to actually use the money all at one time. And that's when, uh, Vijay and Brian, they actually put the entire amount into that budget, to balance the budget off. Now, when Darryl came along, he looked at it, and saw when he received the money, and said, hey, we're not gonna receive it till the following year. And that's basically what we dealing with right now. But believe me, we had these conversations with Brian, because they put the entire amount, saying that we were receiving it in one year, we did not. And we knew that we were gonna, we talked about that here at this body, where we're gonna receive one point two on one pavement, and then the next pavement. And we even talked about that and went back and circled it back. So that is a question too, when we have Brian come, because I've already requested for him to come to first meeting in about September, to just talk to us about our budget and everything, so one, one, we need to make sure we have an explanation as it relates to that. Cause that's what's putting us into this too, even further, into the DEP.
Yep, and so that's why you have to make the adjustment, you have to take one point two million out of your original plan, and put it in the next year.
Which is this?
Which is, yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three. And so that's the first reason we have to do this, because the state is requiring us to do this. And then also, Mr. Biffins has a twenty million dollar project that can't move forward unless we do get an approved DEP. That's the second reason.
Is that based off of, so, the, the state won't allow us to get any money from them unless we have an approved deficit elimination?
Exactly.
So this money, that twenty million, Mr. Biffins, is coming directly from the state, is that the roads, how, how is that working? What is that, is it a bomb, or is it a please?
That's the bomb, that's the bomb we approved.
That's the one that we had approved?
Yeah, for the Eastern Al Falls, North River Park Drive, layer replacement, section seventeen, layer replacement, and Avondale Phase Two water main.
Okay, so how, so the state is basically saying that you can't borrow any money?
There was, there's two things required.
Yeah.
Before we can borrow any money. One, we had to have the audit completed, and we have to have it updated that elimination plan.
Okay.
Which, is why he called his special meeting tonight, because I have to have it by tomorrow. Cause I'm, I'm on a Zoom call at ten o'clock in the morning with the state. And that's the first question they're gonna ask.
I have been looking at the emails back and forth between the state and Darryl, because that was my question, City Council, just so you know. This is, this, this is something that just literally happened, what was it, last week, or week and a half ago, something like that?
Yes.
And, looking at the whole situation, I was like the same thing, like, why we can't wait till September the first? And, uh, talking directly with Larry and Eric, they were like, well, Mayor, you already have a deficit elimination plan, you just need to update it.
Right.
So that's what we're here to do tonight.
But it did that, normally wouldn't did that right around the time we, we, they approved the budget.
Exactly, if we would have had the audit, we would have had the DEP together, so hopefully, we've been through this a long enough time now, we've already started.
Yeah, we've already, for the audit for this year coming up, we've already signed the engagement letter, I'm already doing the census data, so we're gonna, the audit, we won't, we will not have the same situation.
And each year that we're in a deficit, no matter what it is, if it's two dollars, one dollar, a million dollars, we would have to come back and do this as well.
Yes.
So this is everything that we've already approved, council, from, you know, what I'm hearing, Mr. Biffins, I'm sorry, Mr. Green say, that this is already, based off of this information we have from the state, the letter signed here, this is already our deficit elimination plan that's already approved, we're just making those adjustments. Go ahead, Mr. Green.
That's pretty much it. So then the, but the last piece is this piece that I sent you guys. It is showing that the balance is actually five ninety-seven, eight thirty-five, starting in twenty-one, and not three thirty-seven.
So this is our deficit, it's right now based off of the audit?
Yep, going into twenty-one, twenty-two, cause remember, the audit that just finished, that was the twenty-twenty-one audit.
Right, showing us that we had twenty-nine dollars left, and then going into this one, okay, for the projected year.
Yep, so your deficit started out twenty-one, twenty-two at five ninety-seven, but your original DEP had you starting out at three thirty-seven.
Got you.
Again, even if it would have been a three thirty-seven, you would still be doing this because you're still in the deficit. So until you get to where there's no red, like, you know, that's why they're okay with this, because I've already been back and forth with the state, and they're okay with this because they see us getting out of it in the next fiscal year, because of the ARPA's.
Okay, so because of the ARP money is gonna actually help us, but at the same time, we still need to do some steel cutting.
We still need to make, because we still have a structural deficit, cause as you can see, the one twenty-seven, that, you know, that in red, that's still expenditures over revenues, the next year it goes down even more, but it's not a deficit anymore, cause the deficit is eliminated. So when we're talking about the deficit, we're talking about that ending fund balance. Where it says fund balance ending, if that's green, we're okay. Even though the net revenues can be negative, if our fund balance is still positive, we're okay. All they care about is the fund balance, cause anybody can have a bad year, you know what I mean?
Okay.
So they just don't want you to keep eating up your fund, but they like, wait a minute, you ain't gonna never have no money, so, what you gonna do?
Okay, so, uh, okay, so looking at that, actually, this is actually decent news, for the most part, because if you're looking at the fund balance at the end of the year, you're starting with five ninety-seven, we get that ARP money in this year, and you're talking about the fund balance being the nine, that.
Nine sixteen, yep, going into the net, going into.
Still eating.
Still eating.
Out of it, and that's where we have to, as the council, working with each other, looking at where we can cut, shave, and produce revenues.
That what I'm hearing? Yes, we still have to fix the structural deficit, because you're still spending more than.
You're gonna get that million, and you're gonna eat that up, basically, cause you spent, yeah, over time. So basically, we don't wanna do what we did from twenty fifteen, we built up to three billion, and then we ate it all up over a number of years. We need to work together to figure out how to, to do that, okay? I'm okay with that, I understand now.
That's, that's, that's all I am.
Any questions from this council? Okay, go ahead.
At, 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 when they were talking, the, the, uh, politicians, the plant man, they indicated that we were gonna come out to here, uh, twenty twenty-one, with about a million, something like that?
Twenty twenty-one, no, twenty twenty-one, they said you were gonna come out with, um, three hundred and thirty, no, three hundred and sixty thousand. Is what they showed that you were gonna.
But then they said the next year, we come, it was somehow, somebody said we don't wanna be a million out of there.
Because with the, the structural deficit, that's what we were talking about, overall, right? So when the audit was done, again, as you're looking at the numbers, in twenty twenty-one, at the end of twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-nine thousand, basically in the green, right? But, we didn't pull in enough money, based off of the deficit, because, I mean, based off of the structure of the organization, we've been eating away, cause we're actually spending more than what we have coming in, you don't have enough revenue coming in.
So now, what is that now, I mean, they said we have a billion, but what is it right now, the twenty, the twenty, and another twenty-one?
You talking about twenty-one?
We doing twenty-two now, right?
Right now, we're in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, just ended.
Okay, so now we're going into twenty-two?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, right now.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep, going in twenty-two, twenty-three.
If you're looking at what Mr. Green is presenting to us at the bottom here, for your fund balance.
Yeah, it's showing, uh, uh, showing a problem.
Correct, you will.
That's only because the ARP, that's why.
The ARP money is coming.
Yeah, so that's why Brian is saying that we can't depend on that, because that's a million point two.
It's only a one-time hit for us.
So going forward, you don't have that anymore, so you need to replace that.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, we, we talked about that?
Yeah.
You know, knowing this money just come in one shot.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember, we were talking about, and they were talking about increases in salaries and things, we said, well, hey, you know, this is one-shot money, so you can't increase people's salaries with it. You gotta do something that, that's, that's gonna, uh.
Right, move it forward. So, 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 if you're looking at this councilman, you're going over, starting at the top, you got twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. You see us in the green, but you can also see, as it relates to the net revenues. You see us in the green, but you can also see as it relates to the net revenues, you're still eating away at your fund balance. You follow, so that's where the problem comes in at for the organization. So we need to figure out how to, again, not end with the net revenues in the red.
Exactly.
So we're saying. You gonna have that million for the fund balance, but you eating away at it to help it out.
What you saying, the twenty-four, twenty-five, will that, uh, it will, it's gonna, a negative thirty-three thousand?
Yep.
Correct, but if you see, if you just looking at, if you look at it carrying over how Mr. Green has laid out, which is actually pretty decent.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, you got here where he said the five ninety-seven is what we dealing with right now, right? We know that the deficit elimination plan, as we changing the DEP to show that we gonna receive that one point two million, is gonna help us out, and that's why you got all greens coming over here in twenty-two, twenty-three.
That's the only column you got all greens.
Only because you got that, so then you come over here, you start to see in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, you got a red, negative one twenty-seven. But you still eating away at your fund balance, which will start off at nine hundred and fifty thousand, getting to seven hundred and eighty-nine, then you start with seven hundred and eighty-nine, then you eating at it again at thirty-three thousand and eating away at it. So that's why we gotta figure out, again, how we, uh, balance the organization, cutting where we have to cut, looking at savings wherever we can find them. I know that Mr. Green is working with, uh, UCSI right now, and they were talking about some savings in the insurance piece of like almost three hundred thousand. So, things like that is gonna help us out as we're going along, and I know Councilwoman Wiley, we definitely working with her on that.
I know, I know, he called me and he told me about one thing where they saved us after he got those numbers from the people he was asking for. Uh, like eighty-seven, they were gonna renew for the same thing, a hundred and thirty-seven, and they ended up doing it for eighty-seven thousand.
Correct, yeah, so that's part of all of this stuff, so that's the stuff we have to really be looking into.
And then some of those levies fell off too, that helped us.
Right.
Those judgment levies that we had, some of those fell off, so.
That's a good thing too, and I wanna report on that too, so the council should have a report on that, anytime a levy fall off, especially the taxpayers, we need to see what that is.
Okay.
Because I know that, and this is off subject, but we talked about a plan B, I mean, based on the deficit elimination plan, because at the end of the day, you should, should still be producing revenue that's balanced green and then producing money to put in the bank, right? So as you're actually working through the business itself, you can't just be running off of your fund balance because it's gonna end up eating up regardless at the end of the day. So we have to figure out something in this, the figuring was, as we were talking with Brian and all of us heard him say, that, uh, the pension piece. For us looking at cost, we looking at, uh, going to the taxpayers and saying, hey, you know, we got a million three from the pension that the city's paying. You know, it's gonna cost each of the taxpayers thirty-three or forty dollars or something like that, I don't know if you guys have figured out all the funds of what it would cost us, but it would have to actually go on the ballot to have that happen.
That didn't even happen.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this, and that's why I wanna see the report on the levies that's falling off, you know, because you're telling Mr. Green, you know, I, I can't wholeheartedly support that, raising people's taxes anymore in the city of Inkster. But if it's something that fell off, that we have been paying store before a number of years, that people are not gonna feel the impact of it. And we can actually help balance our budget and keep what we have. Now, we should be, you know, okay, but that's a discussion for us when it comes before us.
Oh, okay, cause I was saying, would this be the appropriate time to start talking about some of those things that we talked about, when we all passed the budget?
Well, let me say this, on September, um, first, the first meeting in September, which will be the day after Labor Day, which is that Tuesday, right, I think it's the sixth. This is the sixth year, we'll have that, and need to have that discussion, because if we're gonna do anything as it relates to putting anything on the ballot, that has to be done by September fifteenth. So, we'll make sure that we have a fun night after Labor Day, talking about all of our financials.
The last time we met with, uh, Brian.
Yep.
He indicated that, uh, we was talking about, you know, separating, I don't know if he said, I got it right, separating the private pension and employees. And, and go ahead, uh, benefit.
That's what he was just talking about.
Yeah, that's what I was just talking about, so, um, yeah, so I'm gonna make sure that we bring that information before you, as a matter of fact, let's get with them and have them just send that, the language on that, so the council will be familiar with it. You know, what exactly.
Act three forty-five, that's what it's called.
My question would be, uh, what meal, how much meals would that be to do that?
Well, they said, they said max, they said you can actually max it up to the one, it's one point three million, so whatever those meals would be, I think each meal is like two hundred, somewhere a thousand, you know? So it depends on, again, like I said, you know, for me, you know, of course, it's up to the councilmatic body, but we gonna present the information that if taxpayers are already paying so much, you know, already, you know, so, if we have levies and meals that have fallen off, then we can possibly look at the meals. But, uh, and let me say, this is just my own soapbox, seventy-eight meals in the city of Inkster, forty-six in Westland, you know? Um, typically African-American communities are around average in the state of Michigan, all African-American communities, their mileage is way higher than their suburban neighbors. So, those are the conversations that I'm gonna start having, I, I met with, uh, the, hopefully, uh, the new state rep, um, Dylan this morning, and we were talking about, you know, how we approach that conversation with the state, because that's a state con, it's a state conversation. Um, as it relates to our meals being so high in the city of Inkster. And it's, it's ridiculous, it just basically just keeps us in poverty, and that's what's happening, you know, the taxpayer, the taxes are so high, people can't afford it. Okay, other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none, all the papers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Will we vote now?
I'm sorry, did we even?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't hear a.
Did we have a motion?
I didn't hear a motion. It scared me.
Councilwoman Wiley, you get me, you get me together.
I thought I was napping.
Get me together, let me say, okay, come on, give me the, give me the language, uh, check the question, I did just jump right into the presentation, go ahead, check the question.
Um, as we were, you guys were discussing and considering approval of the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five deficit elimination plan.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Moving properly supporting, any other discussion? Hearing none, all the papers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
I have to say nay, cause I'm still confused.
Okay, we need to, we gonna sit down with you, I had Mr. Green call, I told Mr. Green to call you. All the papers signify, we said aye, and the motion carries, alright then, moving right into public participation. We do have one coming for us, Mr. Green. Mr. Green, make sure you get with Councilwoman Wiley, get her right, get the numbers she said you'd call around twenty-four seven, um, so.
Yeah, it's the home number, cause I, I never hear the cell, never.
Yeah, cause I, I wanted to make sure you talk to each person with that, but we wanna definitely be all on the same accord to the best of our ability. We do have one public, um, participation, uh, Melanie Heinz, please come forth quickly, please, and not to rush anybody who's had a presentation too much, I would like some, we, we made her home.
Good evening, Council, I am proud to announce we're doing a collaboration with the city of Inkster, the Inkster Chamber of Commerce and the Leanna Hicks Library. So we're doing our first Innovation Technology Skill Trades Job Fair, I'm super excited about it. We have one in Westland and Dr. Dignan gave me all the contacts, so we have like the carpenter mill rights, the bricklayers, like really high-paying jobs, like twenty dollars an hour and plus with benefits. Um, Kearns, um, we got Wayne County Community College coming, uh, I got the career tech coming, and I got, um, M I, M I A T. Cause they got skill trades where you can go to school for like seven months and just come out making a lot of money, HVAC and things of that nature. Um, I have a lady coming out that does career, uh, resume writing, and I'm gonna have Lady the Bishop of Credit, she's gonna come help with the credit restoration. And, um, I'm just super excited, this is gonna be amazing, um, it's not cost anything. And we got the chamber, they're gonna donate like food and stuff, so like refreshments, so I just got the flyer done. My, um, intern developed this flyer, so the internship programs are working really good, so I'm super excited. Um, I definitely wanna get this to the community, and the letter that I sent out to the skilled.
Just real quick, you said the intern.
For our summer youth program.
It's our summer youth program, that's why I want people to know that we have hired youth in the city of Inkster.
Yes, and it's been amazing, they helped me with the grant, doing the census work, the research and development. Um, we're working on getting like updated contact information for like different social service agencies for our community, so it's amazing. And, um, this is really exciting, and in the letter that I sent, like when I talked to the bricklayers, they were excited, cause like, no, you know, nobody comes to Inkster. So they were telling, they're gonna come to our event and they're gonna actually come out and do another event, we're gonna host something. Um, I talked to some of the people over AIA, they're gonna do an educational summit, so we're gonna have the Michigan Department of Education come down, so we got that set, uh, but this is gonna be great.
When is the date and the time and location?
So this, uh, the Innovation Technology Skill Trades Job Fair is gonna be Wednesday, September fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-two, at eleven AM to four PM at the Leanna Hicks Library. And the nice thing is, this is like a start, because if it gets really big, we're gonna have like a press release, we're gonna really put it out there. And then we can start maybe having a recorder, something like that, cause when I wrote my letter to the skilled trades, I said, hey, we're the city of Inkster, they're doing a lot of projects in the area, especially with Demi and with the reconstruction, we wanna use our own community to rebuild our community. So if we start now, get these people trained, by the time that project goes, our people can have those jobs and rebuild our cities, so I'm super excited about it.
That's it, any questions for, council, hearing none, City Council, you guys, anybody have anything?
No, just, we'll say, great job, Melanie.
Yeah, really good job, Melanie, keep up the great work, appreciate it. Alright, motion for German?
Vote.
My support?
Support.
I did have one thing, if nobody needs anything from me in the next few days, I'm gonna be on tomorrow and Monday, and returning on Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, then, and, okay, sounds good then, thank you, so very much, motion for German? Some vote, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
And nays?
Oh yeah, it's, it's in the, sometimes, sometimes the state or county, their resolution is in another board now.